I was told we don't do math that day anymore.
I call the meeting to order. Everybody please stand for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tap into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call please.
Mr. Perulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mr. Valero.
Here.
Mr. Mandala.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for a comment on items on the agenda. Seeing none. First, I want to apologize that we're starting almost 25 minutes late. Our executive session ran over and that's not an excuse, but we apologize for making everybody wait. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing on the eve of the snowmageddon?
Did you guys hear there's a storm coming?
Just a tiny bit, maybe.
The answer is no.
Did you get the text?
But don't tell my kid. She doesn't know yet.
I commend our superintendent for making the call as early as he did. Not as early as some other people, but you know, pretty early, I just want to say. No, it's not. But enjoy the day tomorrow and everybody stay safe. Anyway.
Stay safe.
Exactly. Home, all day.
Stay home. I don't know, a trip to Florida or California sounds really good.
You are not leaving tomorrow morning. Your flight's gonna be delayed. Anyway. Any reports this evening?
Yeah, I'm leaving tomorrow morning. Mr. Shoner.
Just that this Saturday, we attended the South End FSAs or the South End Schools Casino Night, which was a lot of fun. A lot of gifts were won. It was a...
Did you win any?
I did not win anything. I did not win anything at North End Tricky Tray and I did not win anything at South End's...
We just wanted to make sure it's equal.
I just wanted to make sure.
There's nothing, no. I did not win. But it was a lot of fun and a lot of parents came out. Ladies were there, which is fantastic. Great support and it was a lot of fun.
It's great.
And then also Into the Woods. I don't know if anyone saw Into the Woods was this...
Only Act One?
Pissed Weekend. You stayed for, that's right. Good, Act One, that's true. So it was also, they did a great job.
They did. I mean, it really was a fantastic performance and the amount of work that had to have gone into making that happen is just amazing, so.
It was amazing.
Very nice job.
That's it.
All right.
Yes.
I just wanted to add, Mr. Shoner, that I won one of the magnificent door prizes.
Oh, I forgot about the pink, the summer basket that you won, yes.
The chance of give it back ain't happening.
You're gonna cherish it always or...
Always, all summer long.
I just want that one was in it.
That remains a secret, apparently. I attended our coffee talk. Is this the last one for the, or is there one more? Okay, I wasn't sure.
That was Wishful Thinking?
No, it was very nice. It was well-attended last night. The FSA meeting at the middle school had been canceled, but the coffee talk still went on.
Oh, nice.
And it was nice. We had a nice discussion. We did. It was very nice. Cookies were great. Absolutely. Very nice.
What was some of the stuff mentioned?
Let's see, there were, we talked a little bit about the budget and the financial constraints and the media specialist had been brought up again and just the state of the middle school, you know, media center as far as the books and things like that. And then while we've recognized that, obviously, we talked about it last week, that, you know, the importance of a media specialist, you know, the special ed teacher and then the block of math for the eighth graders is really what we have to implement this year. So we talked about that. We also talked about...
Were the bulk of the parents middle school parents?
You know what? There were parents who were both middle school and high school parents. I mean, there was probably like, what, six people or so? Maybe rounding up to seven. We also talked about some advertising that we're thinking about doing in order to get more revenue. We also talked about the need, you know, if anybody has any suggestions for any kind of revenue-producing ideas that they might have heard in other districts, because as you know, the budget is tight and we're looking for ways to kind of make additional funds. And then we also talked, we had a discussion about Chromebooks and the idea of being one-to-one. And Mr. Fetherman had a great discussion about how it's not just, you know, one-to-one that's the goal, but it's being able to utilize the tools and the apps and things like that and be effective in the teaching, so. So yeah, it was a good discussion. It was just a little over an hour, so.
Yeah, it was great.
It was nice. It was good, so. And that was it. All right, moving on. So we have a few different presentations. We're gonna go out of order just a little bit, just in the interest of kind of helping people along. So the first one we're gonna do is the newjersey.com high school video network. So we're gonna start off with you.
The pleasure to be here. Sorry, I don't have any officials, but I do have a printed deck for you guys. I'm John Hernandez.
Should we have the mic up there?
Well, we're gonna make him stand up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, exactly. He's handing out stuff now and then we'll make him go up there.
Okay.
Is the mic up there? It is there. Yeah.
Yeah, just for the community. This is videotaped and live at the same time.
Thanks for hav- thanks for having me tonight. I'm John Hernandez. I'm here with NJ.com and I wanted to talk to you guys about a new program we're rolling out. We're building a statewide online video network to broadcast high school sports on all levels. Our partners would come in, install video cameras on your gymnasium and athletic field. We would manage those cameras remotely and then we would make the content available online on a subscription basis at NJ.com. Now, there's no cost whatsoever for you guys to participate. We're gonna make the capital investment to purchase, manage, and install the cameras and maintain the cameras and we're also gonna share 10% of the gross with you guys. So I have a revenue-producing opportunity here that costs no money to be involved.
Looking for a creative revenue opportunity.
Now, we looked at the competition. I'm not sure if the athletic director or the super has ever heard of NFHS. NFHS is a national network. Their footprint in the state of New Jersey is very minimal. They're charging for cameras. We're not charging whatsoever. We're building this out right now. We have about 10 schools signed up. Several schools from the Super Football Conference and we're growing this. This is the future for us, video content, and we're hoping by the football season we have maybe 50 to 100 schools lined up in the program. Like I said, we're making a significant investment per school that we set this up with. It's about $16,000 that we're investing. We're providing two cameras, two camera sets. So one camera set is on your main athletic field. One camera's pointed towards the scoreboard. Another camera's panning the action. We're managing those cameras remotely. We're making it available on a subscription basis for $4.99 a day or $10.99 for the month. Total HD quality, great quality. Privacy is very important to us, you know. I'm the guy building it across the state, so I'm dealing with boards across the state. Cameras are only turned on a half hour before an event. They're turned off a half hour after an event. On the front end, we're giving the ability to create highlight reels so parents, students could go in there, grab a couple clips, download it into a video, share it on social media. Coaches and the athletic director will have free access, so they're able to do game review film and stuff like that. We're also able to pipe in your audio, so if you have sports journalism students and stuff, broadcasters, we could pipe in the audio. We're giving you the ability to upload commercials too. So this is another way to monetize the project besides the 10% that we're gonna share with you. So during halftime, if you had an infomercial about the school that you wanted to upload or maybe you're selling advertisements to boosters for your football club, now you can upsell them a video on a live stream, so you can make a significant amount there. The schools part of our network are gonna benefit from editorial opportunities as well. Our writers at NJ.com are chomping at the bit to integrate video highlight reels into their written articles. The other day, we did that with Don Bosco-Berging Catholic game, basketball game, and it just shot up on social media. So you guys are gonna have the added exposure of being part of our network and we're here to support you guys every step of the way. So we'll provide you all the marketing collateral that you need to promote the partnership, signage, banner ads for your website, email templates, stuff like that. And once the contract's signed, I literally can have cameras in here in two weeks. We're not here to talk about, oh, let's get it up in September for football. We want to get it up right now. So we'd love to work with you guys and if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Are you familiar with Huddle?
Yes.
Do you see them as a competitor or somebody you would want to partner with to share content?
Huddle's definitely not a competitor. They're a value add.
So you would, are you doing something like that with them or...
We're not in a partnership with them. It's something that we might consider down the road, but I would say if you're using Huddle, continue using Huddle. Our network's a value add into what you're doing.
Maybe want to explain, I don't know, do you guys know what Huddle is? Are you familiar with it?
Huddle's basically a platform where you can, you know, grab highlight reel clips and review game film and stuff like that. It's very popular on the sports side.
My question first, privacy-wise, you said you turn the cameras on, turn the cameras off, half hour before, half hour after. What guarantee do we have that that's gonna be done? Or how do we monitor that they're on or off?
It's in the contract and also there's a red light on the camera. So when the camera, when the light's on, it's on.
And is somebody there or it's just remotely done? You turn it on or...
No, we're remotely managing them. So we have a team that has like Xbox controllers. We're panning the action and stuff, so we're managing everything remotely and they're being supervised.
But they're watching it remotely and videotaping, so they're zooming in or doing whatever but from a remote location?
Absolutely. And the content is available on a live stream and it's also available on an archive basis as well. And we're broadcasting sports on all levels, so freshman JV varsity and even scrimmages and stuff. Now, we're gonna start doing lacrosse scrimmages and stuff. So any other content also that you might want to broadcast, for example, our cameras are there. So if you have a graduation or something else and you want us to turn on the cameras, we can turn them on for you.
John, we're only being asked the football field. What about our gymnasium, basketball game, softball?
We're giving you two camera sets, so one in your main gymnasium, one in your main athletic field. You could buy a third. It's probably around $15,000, $16,000.
We'll talk later.
I like the way that guy thinks.
That's our question.
Oh, I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say.
Especially 'cause, exactly.
And I have a baseball.
Well, we're only offering two cameras. Like you said, we're doing, you know, 16,000 investment per school, so we can do two cameras. We could talk about a third camera set, try to get you a discount. That question comes up a lot with a lot of schools.
Well, you know, it's just tough because you don't want anyone to feel like they're the redheaded stepchild and that we're gonna do football, we're gonna do lacrosse, we're gonna do basketball, but at the same time, you know, baseball and softball.
Well, that was gonna be my question. Will the camera reach the baseball field? If it's at the scoreboard, would they be able to actually see the baseball game?
Well, the cameras go on the press box usually, let's say in the main, you know, athletic field, right in the middle and then, you know, two cameras, so one's right at the scoreboard, one's panning the action.
So I think the question is, have you seen our facilities?
No.
Okay, so then our baseball field is, actually, our home offense is the track and the bleachers of the home team. Would you be able to zoom in to see the baseball game from the top of the, from the top of the press box?
Yeah, it's definitely a possibility. I have to see what the zoom capabilities are and that, because we don't want the quality of the stream to suffer if it's a far zoom, but if it's doable, we can do it.
Do we have to have it on the scoreboard?
Well, the cameras are different. The camera that are on the scoreboard is not as sophisticated as the camera that's panning, so you can't split them up.
So if that were the case, Mr. Mangili, then if the baseball didn't work, so now we're looking at just soccer, lacrosse, and football and nothing?
And volleyball.
Okay, so what are we not?
Are you leaving baseball out and you're leaving softball?
Softball out.
There's almost an option of you talking to them.
I think it's something we can discuss and figure out, because I think this is a great idea and I think we'll make it. We're gonna make it work.
I just want to make sure that we are being inclusive.
No, I think we, oh, we definitely will.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we definitely will.
And John, I'm not trying to give you a hard time. The presentation was fantastic, but I have to, we have to...
No, but you're gonna, they're gonna want to know, why aren't you covering their game?
Right. Right. No, I agree.
How quickly could these be up?
Two weeks, once the cameras, once the contract's signed, two weeks.
It could be up for baseball and softball season.
Yeah, we want it up now.
Yeah.
You throw in another set of cameras, you will sign.
How'd you like that?
I wish I could. I wish I could.
The other question I have too is, is how do we know how many subscriptions are being paid for on a monthly or daily basis?
We're gonna give you reports and stuff like that on a probably quarterly basis of what the subscriptions are. And we know that even if you weren't able to push one sub, one subscriber to us, that we would be able to take care of it, because, you know, we have the NJ.com network, the Star Ledger. We can push so much traffic. We know exactly where our traffic's coming. So we know that we're gonna deliver a healthy 10% on the gross and if you guys are actively promoting it too, which we're gonna support you with marketing collateral and stuff, then I think it could be a win-win. This is the business model right now, because NJ.com is hungry to build this thing, hungry to scale it up to, you know, several hundred schools. The business model could change. It could change a year from now, but right now, cameras are free and we make it totally easy. We're gonna scrape your website for the schedules. We don't need anything from you. We don't want to bother you one bit. We're gonna scrape the schedules, automatically turn on the cameras. If you have special requests, you let us know and we'll be here to support you on marketing it as well.
So my last question, when did the checks go to Cedar Grove High School? Like, do they, monthly or do you...
It looked like it was quarterly after each season.
And it wasn't Cedar Grove High School, they come to the board of ed.
It was...
You didn't catch that.
What? I was ignoring that. I was ignoring that.
I'm just wondering what's the fund 20?
It looked like it's quarterly, right? Is that what I saw in that?
Yeah, I believe it's quarterly.
Right.
But we could set it up whatever way you want, you know. Once you meet, once you hit a certain threshold, then we'd start sending out checks. And then you tell us where the checks, where you want them to go.
You have your own slash fund. It's called New Jersey Film Industry.
So I just have a question about the cameras stay on until a half hour after the event?
Yeah.
Is there a way to turn it off sooner than that, once the game is over or...
We kind of need a half hour to kind of wind things down and stuff, but it probably will be turned off sooner, but we give ourselves a half hour on either end, just a little buffer.
So are these cameras, like, they're installed like where, like, what, like, high up in...
High, so like, on top of the press box, in the athletic field, in the gymnasium, in the middle, all the way up. When we come in, we install, we take care of everything.
And there's how they secure, like, you know, when they're not in use, they're just there?
Well, I mean, they're usually in spots where you kind of can't get to it, but if it was a situation, we could put a cage around the cameras and stuff like that. I mean, we're gonna be across the state, so we're in all types of environments.
Do other school districts some, put some sort of notice as you're walking into the complex that you're going to be on camera?
No, our lawyers scrubbed it and we feel like it's newsworthy events and we don't need any releases and we don't plan on proceeding with that. If you guys are already having them sign releases in the beginning of the sports season and you want to add video streaming to that, that's fine too.
What about the maintenance piece?
We maintain it. We take care of everything, everything. What happens is, when you sign a contract, the first step is a site survey. So several, within a week, we'll come in, our technicians, our engineers will do a site survey with you and then we'll schedule the installation shortly afterwards.
You mentioned graduation and we do have to do the graduation on the football field. How would that, how would that come out? I mean, would people buy that afterwards? Would we, how would you know that I have to reach out to you and say, hey, look, graduation's at 6:30 on the 20th?
Well, you would have to reach out to us. We're not automatically gonna stream a graduation. That would be a special request that you would request. We want to do it and we would probably offer it for free anyway, so we probably wouldn't charge for that event.
To the parents?
What?
To the, that's pretty nice.
Yeah, on the front end, yeah.
Wow.
So I have a question. It says video rights ownership. You retain the rights to your video, so it's, how does that work? It's ours or...
You, you retain, you have the rights. You could do whatever you want with the content. We're basically licensing it from you to do the live stream.
To do the streaming?
Yeah.
To do the broadcasting?
Exactly.
And then do you, you hold on to it after the fact, after you've done streaming or what happens to it?
Well, it's being archived, so it's, so people could go in and play back any games.
Right, so a year later, sorry, someone wants to go back and watch.
Exactly.
It's Verona versus Cedar Grove.
Exactly.
What about data storage though?
And Verona's in. We signed Verona. They're gonna go live. They're already live.
Data storage, that's gonna get, that's gonna pile up in a hurry.
Yeah, well, it's not my problem.
So a question. So you log into newjersey.com, I'm assuming, correct?
Yes.
So we can actually tell, like, family and people that live in other parts of the country to watch this game?
Absolutely. So what happens is, you tell that person across the country, when they log, when they log in, they have a drop-down menu of what school they want the 10% to be allocated to.
And it's a one-day pass, so they could watch one game and that's it?
One day or a monthly pass.
So do we be able to provide us something that we could blast out to our parents?
Absolutely.
Is this what's gonna work out, so they know what to do, click on this link, what are the directions?
We're gonna provide you all the email templates that you need. We're gonna provide you signage for outside in your gymnasium, banner ads for your website, postcards, business cards to hand out, and if you have any other things that you may need, just let us know and we'll take care of it for you. Also, social media posts too, we'll put you some...
You know, we can also put your advertisement on our field for X amount of dollars.
Yes.
Just saying.
Yeah, that might be an opportunity.
What do you think?
Underneath the scoreboard.
Absolutely.
That's a prime spot though.
I know, but this man's, this man's, the business model is too...
The model could change.
I think Mr. DeVita had a question?
Yes. I said, one more question. When you say handle the installation, say that you, where you want to put the camera, you have to, there's no power, you have to run cables or reach that, whatever. I mean, do you handle those both?
Yeah, we, there are some technical requirements that we need and, you know, obviously, we need some sort of power there. Some schools usually have electricians on staff, so we'll work with you with that. We've been in all different types of situations in regard to having cameras with no power, you know, so we'll work with you on that. We're, we're very hungry to get this thing up and running, you know, soon. And Verona's in, they're live, West Essex is in. We're talking to all the Super Football Conference schools. A lot of them are starting to come in. Don Bosco's in, the big Catholic schools are coming in. This is gonna be a really powerful network and it's gonna end up being the biggest network across the country in regards statewide.
As you begin to grow, how do you foresee the monthly and the daily payments, do you see them going up and increasing or do you see them staying where they are, where, you know, one of my board members wants to watch his daughter play softball and it's a $4.99 this year and then in three years, it's $8.99?
Oh, okay, the subscriptions, yeah. They're gonna hold tight at that number. I mean, we did a lot of modeling to figure out what the sweet spot is on the pricing, so we feel good about that pricing, but we reserve the right to change that, you know, as we see fit. But I would say for the immediate, for the next year, it's gonna be there.
That's great. Thank you.
Just one more question, I'm sorry. You said if somebody from across the country wants to, you know, review an archived event, they can pull down the school, but you said that they can choose where the 10% goes? Or does it automatically go to Cedar Grove because it's our archived video?
Well, they're paying for access across the entire network, so they just don't have access to your content. They have access to everything else. But when they log in initially, they can designate where that 10% will go to.
So hypothetically, they could designate it to not go to Cedar Grove, right?
Definitely.
Okay. Something to think about, that's all.
Or if people just don't designate it anywhere, then it's their revenue, I'm assuming.
Well, you have to pick something.
Oh, you have to.
In order to go forward, you have to pick, okay.
So then...
Also, you may pick up, you may pick up subscribers from away teams that aren't on the network.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you for coming.
All right, next up, we're gonna skip the budget for now and we're going to go to the Share 911 presentation.
All right, I think my... Are we on?
Yeah, that's just for the home audience.
Yeah.
So you're good.
I think my first question is, as a former board member, how did I forget to eat dinner before I came here?
Practice.
Right with you. Right with you. And I went to the supermarket before I got here thinking I could bring food to our executive session. I couldn't even get in the place because of tomorrow's storm. I didn't even think of that.
Everybody needs their milk and bread.
I couldn't even get online. I'm like, what am I doing?
Could you imagine if there was a service that would bring their food to you?
Yeah.
Simply gourmet.
I was so upset, because I grabbed sushi real quick. I'm like, oh, the line. Forget it. I'll never make it to the board meeting.
Sushi sounds good though.
That's exactly what happened.
He makes it sound like he gets here on time too.
My name is Ray Bailey with Share 911. What we're gonna do tonight is do a demonstration of Share 911 and how it will help your, your school and your staff during emergencies. Now, my background's law enforcement. I'm retired deputy chief of the Ramsey Police Department. I've been with Share 911 for about four years now. The product itself was actually invented by Eric Andrews, a volunteer firefighter, who set out to really to solve a problem that first responders have and that is, inside a large building where there are a lot of people, there's a lot of information that's not getting out to the first responders. So Eric set out to use the technology that's available in schools today to connect everybody together during an emergency, be able to notify the people that have to be notified, including law enforcement, in that moment that, that somebody sees something happening. I will be approaching this from an active shooter perspective today, because that is my background. Eric, a volunteer firefighter, would possibly approach this from a different perspective and I'll talk about some of those perspectives as we're going forward. Share 911 is a web application. While we're building an app, a mobile app that you would download from the Apple Store, we don't have an app yet. We are a web application purposely built that way because we want people to be able to access us from any device that has an internet connection. So we do know from the data that most of our users will use a mobile device, but they don't have to. They can use a tablet, a laptop, a desktop. So anything that has a browser that can connect through the internet, they can have access to the system. One of the questions I get with the mobile platform is that, you know, people have a flip phone, flip phone. Can they still use our product? And the answer is yes, because what they would do is they would sign in on a regular desktop or a laptop and then they would enter their information. If they want to provide their mobile number, they, they would at least get the text messages to their phones. So what I'm gonna do from here is I'm actually gonna just walk us through step by step. Stop me if you have any questions. I do these presentations a lot. I do all of the implementation around the country. So on any given day, I'm doing three or four presentations, so I can get on that, you know, roll. So if I'm going a little fast, just stop me. So I'm gonna take this from a, just a very simple use case here and everything you're gonna see is permission-based. So in this scenario here, I'm gonna act as if I'm the principal of the high school. So if I'm the principal of the high school, if you think about the way a typical emergency happens, and I'm fortunate that it, because of my background, I get to travel around the country. I participate in a lot of tabletop exercises, a lot of full-scale exercises. I do a lot of training with our customers. In a very typical tabletop exercise in an active shooter situation, it kind of plays out like this in most schools. The, there's gonna be an emergency in the school and a teacher's gonna see that emergency and in most schools in America, the teacher still is gonna contact the principal to say, hey, I'm having an emergency. So what does the principal do? No matter how many times you tell principals, you should probably not go investigate that yourself. No matter how many times you tell principals, you should probably not go investigate that yourself, that's what they're gonna do anyway, they're gonna go investigate it themselves. So they're gonna go down to the other end of the school, they're gonna go, yep, that's an emergency. And in most schools, the principal has to get to the main office, or get somebody in the main office to get on that microphone that's been sitting on that desk since 1975, get on that microphone and go lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. And in most training exercises, the principal will do the right thing and delegate the next step, which is call 911 to somebody in the office. So they'll point to somebody in the office, and they'll go, call 911, we have this emergency. That person's gonna call 911. When that person gets in touch with the 911 operator, if they do that in my hometown of Ramsey, New Jersey, that call actually goes to Ridgewood, where a Ridgewood operator's gonna pick up the phone and go, 911, where's your emergency? And then the dispatcher's gonna ask a series of questions that they've been trained to ask. Name, address, what do you see, what's your callback number, a lot of information. And then that dispatcher's gonna go, okay, that is an emergency, and then they're actually gonna switch that phone call over to Ramsey. And then the Ramsey operator's gonna pick up the phone and go, Ramsey 911, where's your emergency? And you're gonna be like, and then you're gonna ask those, answer those questions again. That dispatcher's gonna dispatch Ramsey cops to the, to the high school. Cops are gonna get there, and they're gonna have to decide where to search. Now, what we do know is that the police officers all over the country, if they hear or see it, they're gonna move incredibly quick to the threat, we know that, 'cause that's what we've been trained to do for a very, very long time. But if they don't hear or see it, they're gonna have to start searching the building, and that's gonna take time, time that we may not have. So what did Eric do to make that faster? Eric did that, what he did to make that faster was, he said, listen, if the teacher sees something and they're authorized to do it, they could put the school into lockdown. And when they do that, it's gonna notify everybody in that building, the principal and law enforcement, in that second. And we have real examples of police officers showing up at the school in 45 seconds, I think it's Manalapan, English Town, is our fastest response that we have recorded, 45 seconds. Why? Because when that teacher hit that button, that police officer on patrol got the alert to his phone. We don't know how you can get a cop to a school faster than that. So back to our case here, where the principal walks down to the other end of the building, and he sees an emergency, and he says, you know what, I need to lock this building down. So, taking his phone out, he can get to Share 911, hit lockdown, he could type a message here, I'm just gonna write test. And he could broadcast an alert. That alert is gonna go out as a text, an email, and a desktop pop-up. I don't have the desktop pop-up installed on this laptop.
Mr. Kenny just got it.
He got it.
Great, the high school guy didn't get it, though.
This text would go to everybody that's in the high school, it would go to your leadership team, and it would go to law enforcement if they're connected to the system.
Whoever is put into the system is required to be part of this.
Correct. In addition to that, um, again, we have that desktop pop-up software. The desktop pop-up software, what's great about it, it runs in the background, once a teacher signs in, they're always signed in, it pops up, it's a big giant yellow screen, if their speakers are on, it will make an audible noise. In addition to this, we don't wanna replace any current policies or procedures that you have. If somebody can make the PA announcement, we still want the PA announcement made. If somebody can call 911, we still want 911 called. We do, we know that we can do all of that faster, but we like the redundancy in the communication, so if we can continue to make those, uh, to reach out, we still want that to happen.
So, question, so the, the science teacher does it, does, do you know that the, what's, what person initiated the, uh, the initial thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, nothing on the system is anonymous.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
And that is what that looks like.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Around a few-
Okay, no, it's, it's, yeah, it shows, it shows who, like I said, you're the social studies teacher, you're the kindergarten teacher that says, this is what's going on.
Because we're based in New Jersey, I would actually, uh, most likely come here to do the training of your staff, and what I'm gonna tell your staff to do is, after they get this alert, no matter how they get the alert, the text, the pop-up, the PA, the first thing I'm gonna tell them is, take the action in the alert and get safe. And that's the most important thing, is for them to get themselves and their kids safe. After it's safe to do so, we want them to check in, and this really is our secret sauce, if you will. The teachers have the ability to check in and tell us what their status is. Our volunteer in the audience will hope. The statuses that they can check in is threat nearby, fire, smoke, medical condition, I'm okay. If they check, I'm okay, they can say they're secure, that they've evacuated, or that they're off-site. I'm gonna say threat nearby, I'm gonna pick a location. Our system does not use GPS, we do not track anybody's phone, because GPS inside a building like this is not as accurate as first responders need it. I need to know exactly where you are, so we're gonna use your floor plans and enter locations. I could type a message in here, and I can check in. Perfect. Your teachers will be able to account for their students. Uh, what Eric realized very early on was that there's no good way to account for students during a lockdown. When the teachers are locked down and in the hard corner, there's no way for them to get out information like what students missed. Doing this without my glasses on, so hoping I have spelled my son's name right. And they land on this screen called Live View. The red card, why is this red card important to your staff? This red card is important to your staff because we're telling your staff in room 101, there's a threat nearby. It's on the first floor, the C side of the building, which every firefighter in the country knows is the back of the building. And we know that door four is closest to room 101. It's important for your staff to know this, because if your staff finds themselves in an unsecure place, and they wanna exit the building, they need to know which way to go, they need to avoid this. If they're in room 102 and they can't lock their door, they need to know they need to barricade. But this gives them what we call situational awareness. It's important to the police department, so when the police department rolls up here, they can see right away that there's something happening in the school and where that threat is, so they know where to begin their search. You see people's names on the cards, again, nothing is anonymous, the phone numbers are only shared with the leadership of the building, the school district, and law enforcement, we don't share everybody's phone number, but this number gives the law enforcement officers the ability just to tap it and call the person. We see that we have missing students here, and we can crowdsource to say what students are being accounted for. So every event that we have, these yellow cards will go from one to eight, back to two, back to five. As kids are reported missing, and all the teachers are saying, you know what, I have that student with me. So here, I'm gonna account for Rob by saying, report found, and his card moves down to, report found.
Ray, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The, the, the name, the names of the students, um, is that a pre-populated list that they could select from, or they have to key in the person?
Uh, they key in the, the person's name. These categories on the bottom here, we keep collapse until we need them, I apologize for my back here. I can see that one student was reported found, and who did that reporting. I can see that we have one staff member that has not checked in, and I can see that I have one staff member that has reported that they were off-site. So the question is, why didn't Michael check in? It could be because he's hurt, maybe he just took my advice, which was get safe, stay safe, and that's what he's doing, which is fine. If we can get 85, 95% of your staff to account for themselves, that's a lot of building that law enforcement doesn't have to search for the individuals. During the event, we can broadcast a message, and this teacher was act, this was built at the request of a teacher. He said, when I'm in lockdown for five minutes, it feels like five hours. And I can send out this message here. In every real-world event that we have, and we're in thousands of schools across the country right now, and we have real-world events on a daily basis, every real-world event that we have, um, the message feature's used a lot. Our everyday real-world emergencies are not active shooter incidents, thank God. We have lockdowns, especially in our California districts, um, and lockouts on a pretty regular basis in our California districts, but our everyday emergencies are not active shooter stuff, it's the stuff that you're actually dealing with every day. So if you're the high school principal, and you have an unannounced fire alarm at nine o'clock in the morning, and your staff, they evacuate, and the fire chief gets there, and it's 32 degrees out, and you're 15 minutes into this unannounced fire alarm, your staff would love you to be standing next to the fire chief, take your phone out, and be able to text a quick message to everybody that's standing outside and say, you know what, fire chief says it's gonna be five more minutes, or the fire chief says it's gonna be another hour, but he has cleared us to go back to the gym. Giving your staff those type of updates during our everyday emergencies is valuable, and your staff will really, really appreciate it. The last thing that happens on the system is the all-clear, which can only be done by a select few people. Once the system clears, it resets, people get the text messages that the situation is clear, and as soon as it is done, we can generate what we call an after-action report, which will be a real-time accounting, uh, of everything that happened. Which maybe I did not issue the all-clear. Nope, I did. Here's one from, uh, a couple of days ago. So these after-action reports are available uh, for your review after the incident's over, so that you can see what happened. They're very valuable during our, uh, drills. The system runs in active mode, and when your staff, they wanna conduct a drill, it goes into drill mode, so that they know it's a practice session. Our schools that practice with it once a month, which is easy for our New Jersey customers, 'cause you do two drills a month, uh, become very proficient at it, uh, it takes two or three drills to get very proficient, but they get very proficient at it. So that's basically the system, you know, it's just, it's a platform to connect everybody together that needs to be connected during these emergencies. It's meant to be as simple as we can keep it, but as fast as we can make it, uh, so people can be notified. And that's what we do. So, questions?
We're actually fortunate enough to have our, our building principals here, who see this, so I would encourage anyone who had any kind of questions or anything at all, if you have your, you know, to ask this guy. Not putting you on the spot at all, I'm just saying.
By the way, I kinda ID'd you guys as the principals when I was sitting back there.
Well, I, I don't really have a question, I just feel like my face is in my phone so much that there's an incident going on, there's an emergency going on, I'm more about, about what's going on on my phone than I am about here, about my situation. And I don't know if that's what I would do in a situation like that, I don't know if I'll be thinking about getting on my phone as opposed to getting on my walkie-talkie, getting on my loudspeaker, or something to that effect. I, I think it has some very valuable points to it, but I just don't know if that's made, I don't know.
No, I, I absolutely agree with what you're saying, and what I see with principals, 'cause I'm on, on site for schools all the time, is principals are actually the only person in the building probably not checking in, because you're doing a million different things. But during a real-world emergency, you'll be doing a million different things, and it's about delegating to those people. So there'll be certain tasks that you're gonna delegate to your office staff to do for you.
I just, I mean, you were saying that all the teachers would have this on their phones.
Uh, correct. Right, but your workload is so different during an emergency than your teachers. Once your teachers have your students safe, they have an opportunity to check in.
Anyone else? All right.
No, but what is this, like, um, a service that we?
That we're looking into, yes, Mr. Kenny, uh, our safety, what's your new title, I'm sorry? The security safety specialist, um, brought in as a, as another option in terms of what some people are using, so.
We'll have to take a look at it.
Absolutely. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along. The next board presentation is the preliminary budget, curriculum, athletics, buildings and grounds. I believe Mr. DeVita, our BA, will be presenting.
It's on a, um, contact. These types of things are done on like a number of contacts, each, each person, teacher, name of contact. And that's what you pay for, a number of contacts.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody for attending tonight, and I thank our administrative team for, uh, coming. We've worked together over the last couple of months, uh, to put this budget together, um, so here's our, our proposed product. In, um, tonight's PowerPoint, I'm just gonna be covering, um, the, the instructional part of the budget, um, athletics, administrative, uh, buildings and grounds, transportation and benefits. At our last meeting, um, we went over, uh, special education and the technology budget, so this is, um, part of the budget that we're gonna go over now. This slide is just a, a summary of, um, the areas that I'm just gonna be going into, um, in the presentation here, um, in our slides, um, in the, the future here, where, um, I'm gonna be going into a bit more, more detail of them, but this is everything from regular instruction, co-curricular activities, um, health guidance, uh, media services, instructional administration, uh, maintenance, transportation, and benefits. Um, and this just gives the summary of, uh, the current year costs versus, uh, the proposed cost for next year. Uh, first is, uh, the regular instruction, uh, budget, and now, this includes all of our, uh, regular, uh, instruction, uh, staff here. It doesn't include any, uh, special education staff or anything like that, it's all of our salaries for our K-12 teachers, um, includes any substitutes, any class coverage, morning duty, uh, detention supervision, all that is, is included here. Um, it includes, um, some services, our, uh, software, uh, products, um, that's included, all, all the supplies for, um, every single school, and, uh, department and program is here, uh, textbooks, um, is here, um, and as you can see, the, uh, the file numbers are, are at the bottom here, it, it has increased, um, uh, slightly, mainly because of the salary increase from, uh, last year. Uh, next is the, uh, co-curricular activities and athletics, um, this includes all of our, um, advisors, all the salaries that we pay to them, uh, for all of the clubs, um, for example, the drama club, uh, you know, key club, or any club like that. We also have our, um, uh, athletic salaries for all of our, uh, coaches for every season is included in here. And the, um, our professional service amount, that's the, um, part of that amount is, uh, the amount that we, uh, pay, um, for our ice hockey program. Uh, we have a, um, we do a, a joint program with, um, uh, Besseig Valley, um, so part of that, um, cost is included in here, um, and all reconditioning and repair of all of our equipment, um, all the supplies that they get for, um, every sport, um, any dues, and, uh, uh, game expenses more, uh, the, the expense for, um, to operate the game, um, you know, if we have a site supervisor, if we have, um, a, uh, somebody managing the clock, or anything like that, um, that's included here. Uh, the one item that's not included here is, uh, transportation, uh, that, I'll go over that in our, uh, transportation slide, um, that'll include all of the, um, uh, you know, the, the trips and all that, all the away games. Uh, next we have health services, this is all of our nurses, uh, throughout the district, um, uh, we have all the, the fee for the, um, our school physician, um, is included in here, all the nursing supplies, um, and any, uh, repairs to any, um, our odometers, any, um, uh, AEDs and all that is included in here. Uh, next, our guidance services, uh, this includes all of our, uh, guidance counselors throughout the district. A portion of our, um, uh, Genesis is included in here, uh, for all of our student software, um, any supplies, um, for the, um, for the guidance counselors. Uh, next is our media services and, uh, library, um, this is all of our, um, media specialists, um, their salaries are included in here, um, and all the supplies, any, uh, books, um, that we have for the elementary libraries, or any, uh, subscriptions, or anything like that is included in here. Uh, instructional staff training, uh, this is our, uh, part of our district supervisor salary is in here, um, and we have any, um, uh, services that we, uh, we use for the district, um, uh, performance matters, or, uh, Moviemax, or anything like that is included in here, um, any, uh, uh, supplies for, uh, curriculum related is included in here. Any supplies for curriculum related is included in here. This is our administrative salaries. This is all of our salaries in here for the school salar, principals, VPs, superintendent's office, business office, is all included in here, any professional salaries such as legal, our auditors, any architect expenses. We do have certain expenses for our, that we pay for our policy consultant. So any, any outside professional services that we pay for comes, comes out of here. Our communication is all of our telephone lines, our internet service, and any supplies for any, general supplies for office supplies, or paper, anything like that is included in here. And we have our, the Board of Ed dues is included here. That's the fee that we pay to New Jersey School Board, so that, that's a required amount that we have to pay, so that's included in here. Next is our buildings and grounds and security budget. This includes all of our custodians, our grounds workers, our supervisor, buildings and grounds, and his assistant. Their salaries are included in here. Our purchase services are all of the areas that we contract out, any boiler repair, HVAC repair, you know, any of the, the geese patrol, or anything like that, that's used to maintain the building, or repair the building is included in here. Insurance is any property and liability insurance, somebody trips, or anything like that, somebody sues us, that's where the, the insurance comes out of. Supplies is all the custodial supplies, anything to maintain the, the building, the cleanliness of the building, paper towels, toilet paper, all that is included in here. Our energy is all of our gas and electric costs to light the building. We also have, included in here is the, the price for gasoline. We pay the town to use their, their gas pumps. We get it at a, this kind of rate that, that the town gets, so it's not like the same price that you're going to, you know, a mobile station or something like that. So we, we do that, that price is included in here. Next, our transportation budget. This includes, we just have us a couple of percentages of our secretaries who handle certain work with transportation. We have any payments for any of our regular routes. Currently, we have four regular routes that we transport. Legally, any student that, in grades K-8, that's under two miles, we have to transport them. And any student that's grades nine to twelve, that's over two and a half miles, we have to transport them. So that's what the, the expense for that is. This is, as I mentioned before, the, the athletic trips. This is the amount that it costs to, that we pay to go all, all of our away games for every single season here. And special education, this is the cost of, to transfer all of our special students to private schools that they attend. You notice that the amount is a lot less from the current year to what we're posing for next year. We are looking into changing how we operate the transportation currently. We're looking to either buy our own buses, or bid things ourselves, so we're anticipating savings, and over the next few months, we'll have a more concrete plan in how we want to handle that. Lastly, should be our, our benefits is a big part of our budget. It includes any payments that we send down to the state, social security, PRS, and DCRP, they're payments that we pay for any non-sophisticated staff down to the state. Workers' comp is insurance money that we pay to, to our insurance company, more for if any, any employee of our own gets injured on the job, that, that pays for that. Health benefits is the, the biggest number on this slide. This includes all of our medical, our dental, our prescription expenses. And we are anticipating a, a larger increase next year. Our claim history has been higher than in, in past years, so we're working with our, our brokers, working with marketing, our, our insurance plan to get those costs down. Our tuition reimbursement, that's required by our contracts with all of our unions. We have to pay for certain reimbursements for college courses or anything like that. Other benefits includes any expenses that we pay for our custodials, custodial staff. We pay for uniforms for them. We have some percentage of that money also. We pay for our, to administer our COBRA account, which is our insurance, one of our insurance accounts, and our flexible spending account is included in that. And compensated absence, that is whenever anybody retires, we, we have to pay them out according to the contract for their, their sick days. So that amount is, is what we anticipate to pay for, to people that are retiring. We don't have as many people retiring at the end of this year as opposed to last year, so that's why that number is, is lower. And I think that's the last slide. This was just part of the budget. Just to give a, a timeline here, the board will be approving the preliminary budget at our, we're gonna actually change that meeting, I believe, to March 26th, that, that Monday. Originally, it was scheduled for March 20th, but the, our estate aide, the address from the governor was moved down two weeks, so the estate is allowing us to, for a week to delay to approve the preliminary budget. So that's why we'll be changing the meeting to March 26th to give us, or, yeah, March 26th to give us a little more time to properly develop the, the budget. And then our public hearing will be April 24th. At that time, we'll, I'll be doing a detailed presentation on, on all aspects of the budget. I'll have the, every line, the, the total amount, the estimated tax increase, and Mr. Featherman and I will be doing a tag-team presentation. And that's it. Any questions?
No.
No.
Great job, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any questions from the audience?
Is this the part where you dismiss the audience?
No, they're sticking around.
All right.
Right there.
A little bit.
Tough crowd.
Take the day off tomorrow.
Nice.
That's true.
Just in case you're tuning in.
I'll talk quickly.
Day off tomorrow. You want me to time you? Just kidding.
And there's the pressure. All joking aside, I do appreciate Mr. DeVita going through everything. The budget process is, is never easy, and it seems like it gets more difficult every year. And so thank you for, for walking everybody through that, and for obviously assisting the finance committee in, in this entire process. We do appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're done with presentations, moving on. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of February 27th, 2018. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B2 through B5?
So moved. Second.
B2 is a motion to approve the application for use of the Cedar Grove Fields and Facilities for the Township of Cedar Grove Downtown Advisory Committee. B3 is a motion to accept the generous donation from the Cedar Grove Lacrosse Booster Club for four lacrosse pitchbacks. B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education. And B5 is a motion to approve the fourth quarter unemployment insurance for the mount listed. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S11?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve Mary Di Nounzio, media specialist at Southend. S2 is a motion to rescind Joseph Moravito from the film club stipend. S3 is a motion to approve Jenna Sweeney for the position of film club co-advisor. S4 is a motion to accept the resignation of Nancy Manley, high school special education teacher, as of June 30th. S5 is a motion to accept the resignation, oh, help me, please. Sin. Buildings and grounds custodian, I just didn't want to mess that up. S6 is a motion to approve Kristen Arluna and Jennifer Coakley, Southend Literary Publication stipend. S7 is a motion to approve Jessica Schumacher as a volunteer coach for the girls varsity lacrosse program. S8 is a motion to approve Christine Karabides as a substitute, as a substitute teacher. S9 is a motion to approve the following employees for the stipend position supporting the spring play for the 17-18 school year. S10 is a motion to approve the following of school volunteers. And S11 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under policies, no, we're just, we're not reading anything, right? We're just, okay.
No, this is second meeting.
Under policies, can I have a motion for S12?
So moved.
Second.
S12 is a motion to approve the, the second reading of the following policy updates, revisions, and these are the ones that we heard at the last meeting that we reviewed. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none, future meeting events. So right now, it says March 20th as our next meeting, but it's actually going to be Monday, March 26th. Here, 6:30 exec, 7:30 regular, and then the following meeting will be April 10th after spring break, same time, same place.
Different show.
Different show, absolutely. Any further, anything?
No, ma'am, just everybody be safe tomorrow. Be smart about it, stay home.
Careful.
Enjoy.
Enjoy your day. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Valero.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is over. Have a good night, everybody.